West Tennessee's mobile banking gives you greater access to your money and more possibilities within your reach. It's easy to use, just follow a few simple steps and you can bank the way you live, on the go. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Lender, Member FDIC.
The first thing we want to do is get is a consent agenda.
Make a motion with Chris.
Second. We have a motion in second to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Then it is approved. All right, the next thing to hold up here is delegations. And I think the first delegation is going to be from the high school. Would you, one of you ladies or ladies up to the stage just stand?
My name is Lisa Aldrin, class president of the class of 2016. And I'm Scarlett Toll, and I'm the secretary of the class of 2016. And on behalf of the class of 2016, we would like to request a donation for Project Adjoish.
I make a motion if you give $1,000 or if you're not interested.
All right, we have a motion in second to give the project graduation $1,000. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Get that key.
Thank you.
Congratulations ladies, y'all have a safe time in there. All right, the next thing, we got delegation, I believe, Mr. Jason Ellison.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion for $1,000. You might be at a second. Just a, I was last here last, last November. November, November. I know that we talked together about everything as far as on the pin and out of the schools. As far as the schools have anything ordered or brought in, but still wanted on the kind of the table, maybe as a reminder, as far as kids bringing, or maybe we could have this alternative for a meal or something for the kids that we did have in the system that are highly allergic, maybe even just a little bit allergic to peanuts. My child has not had any reaction as far as we know to peanuts, but he is very highly allergic. I just hate anything that happened to him as far as an allergic shock or death or any kind of thing. Not only him though, for the other kids, I don't know if that kind of many kids are in the system with it, but even just one. And even after he's gone from school, you know, there'll be kids coming up from kindergarten or wherever, you know, year time of road. Just a reminder before we talk about it in November. I know it's kind of on a maybe job with two, three months. Two, two. Does something about the rest of the year and then maybe summertime. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, this time, I think we have Mr. Greer Lashley here that is going to address the response to projects he's looked at. Mr. Greer, you got the question?
I made a call up the boards again, just to reiterate that when we had the, during the last, during the spring, when, or prior to the vote for the tax referendum, when Duane Seaton had come forward and asked us to purpose those dollars toward capital, outlay capital projects. And the mutual verbal agreement was yes, we would. After that tax referendum passed, we were conscientious of what projects could we do with the resources that would be made available when that debt was retired, whenever that debt will be, or that check will be or amount be provided to us. So prior to waiting until the actual day that we had the check in hand, we sought out Mr. Lashley to consider some projects, some renovations, of different projects to consider. And again, he just gave us a several to look at, to consider for future upgrades, to two areas in our campuses that are utilized quite a bit, and some things that are necessary, maybe not as cosmetic, but as much necessary. So anyway, remind that Bob went with us to visit those sites and then discussion with that Greer and his colleague Pat English came back about a week ago with some numbers and totals, so.
Good evening everyone. Thank you for allowing me to come speak to you this evening. As Mr. Kewers said, we had an initial meeting and talked about what might be the most present needs at all of the various schools. And so a list was generated and as instruction manager, our role at this stage of the game is to take our knowledge of what current costs are on recent projects that we handle and provide as accurate a budget as we can so school system can make an intelligent decision about whether or not you want to proceed on with that project or not. And keep in mind, these are budget numbers. We think they're very accurate, they're based on recent projects that we completed, but we would not have put these out for bid. Anything that you would decide to proceed on with as far as the project would be competitive, we'd have received hard bids and bring them back for your approval. These are the, this is the best guess we can give you right now to give you that information to make a decision. So no particular order, just in the way we presented it to Troy. Of course, we consulted with Mr. Eads back and forth. We've made probably eight or nine digits down to each campus measuring, looking at these things. These have been big help to provide information for us as well as make these budget numbers. So we'll start at the middle school, and I think that's one of the items that need to be addressed first. So proposing improvements at auditorium would be replace the seating, replace the curtain, paint the interior, put down U4 covering, that would be floor tile where there is currently floor tile and carpet where there's currently carpet, replace both of those. Surround, put a surround around the sound booth, I think there's been issues and we see this a lot at auditoriums, is multiple usage is hard secure equipments if there are sometimes those things have tendency to walk off or get left on. So it's a glass and aluminum enclosure round that'll make that more secure. Replace the ceiling tile and then a little bit of attention to the stage floor. It has a few areas where it's busted and it's pretty worn down. So the budget to complete those items is $390,000. And again, that's the seating, replacing the curtain, painting, floor covering, surround sound for the booth, or surrounding the booth, ceiling tile and stage floor repair. So that was all at once. Also with the middle school, at some point in time, windows have been changed out from the old windows to the energy efficient windows, but not all of them. So while we were there, we went on and measured and counted the amount of windows, or the number of windows that we wanted those to be energy efficient windows, which I think there is a payback to that, a relatively quick payback for efficiency. It's $160,000. Some of those windows are escape windows, where there's an escape window now, we're replacing them with escape. Heating and cooling, some of the units are well past their life cycle. So when Brett said we went to Kennedy's unit, determined what the age was and any of those that are either beyond their last leg or on their last leg, we give plan on replacing those. And back to the windows, it's $160,000, I hope I said that, $160,000 budget on the windows. $125,000 budget on the heating and cooling units. There's been some issue with water getting in at the auditorium during the heavy rain. The grade is kind of not exactly how it should be, so to correct that, probably put in a catch basin to re-correct that water to get it away from the building. We budgeted $25,000 for that. And then I think Fire Department has been on us a little bit about a lift, not being able to get someone who can't climb stairs to be able to get up on the stage. So we have a, we budgeted a lift for $20,000. So all of that together is $330,000 for those items. Placing the windows, heating and cooling, addressing the drainage issues in the new states, or the new lift in the states. And that pretty well gets us what we considered the best that was generated for the middle schools. Anybody have any questions about that?
We just put a lift down, I think.
We had to remove that because it does not, we had to do lifting. It's been, been several years.
Actually, I guess I missed it.
We've done a couple of projects on that drainage, water getting in there. That's kind of, we're not getting it done right.
Two or three deals done on it.
How many seats are you talking about?
You were here in Troy.
I would say it's somewhere around six.
What does that mean? Is anything?
Oh, we're, it's all up.
It'll go back to the same amount?
There's eight hundred and something.
Yeah. Eight hundred and something, okay. I wasn't, I wasn't sure.
Whatever's there will be reflected.
Okay, I didn't know if the units would be larger or be less or what.
Should be roughly the same.
Okay.
The next item that we were asked to take a look at was the press box. I think it's probably seen as better days to replace that one that's currently there with an eight foot by 24 foot, that'd be a three cubicles. And it would have an observation rail on the top, platform with a rail where it can film. That's a budget of $77,000. And that's one we've recently put in another school. Again, we've put big bids on that as well, but we just used that price for that for some reason. And it is heated and cooling.
That is heated and cooling.
Yes, sir.
How big did you say it was?
It is eight feet by 24 feet. They think it is.
Was that like a preface of really, did you say that they had something that they basically sit in there?
Exactly. Then we moved on to Chester County High School, and the first item we looked at on high school was the roof. And we've been having some roof fix there. And we actually had a roofer come and do a roof inspection for us. Looked at any layers on there, we think it's still the original roof, so we're okay to overlay.
Yeah, it's original.
So the good news is we don't have to tear that off, we can do an overlay. And this includes replacing the coating around the school, that's the metal edge of the roof where it ties into the brick. And any others announced that might be needed, our budget there is $775,000. The next item we were asked to address was heating and cooling system, totaled about 317 tons of heating and cooling. Again, we, the units that were in there were worse, and we budgeted $500,000. There are a lot of them that are either not working or anything, or they're actually just living along the business. And those are the only two items that in high school, those two items totaled $1,275, one being $275,000. Then we moved on to the junior high, and we were asked to take a look at the bleachers, replacing those. And our budget for replacing the bleachers in the gym ages is $145,000. We would lose just a few seats, not many, but the code departments now, you have to have eye leads up into the bleachers, so there's so many feet there, I mean, whatever the case it is, you're going to lose just a little bit, but not much. Also, I think there's an issue of getting students in and out of the cafeteria and try to speed up that flow and to improve that, cut into new openings, doors to try to speed up the flow of traffic. That's a $12,000 budget on that. And then also, we addressed any of the windows that have not been changed out, there's still a whole single pane type windows, a budget of $150,000 on the windows. So total at the junior high is $307,000 worth of it. Then we moved on to East Chester Elementary, and the windy units there, or was the only item that we addressed, budget to replace those, which the majority of them was $225,000. And then West Chester, the windy units that need to be replaced, the budget on that is $144,075. And the HBAC units that need to be replaced, the budget for that is $5,000. And again, the total there is $219,750. And then the last project or last location campus that is Jack's Creek Elementary, and the windy units there, replace those, we got a budget of $115,000. And the HBAC system, replace the units there, we have a motion, they need replacing a $70,000 making a total of $185,000 for Jack's Creek. And again, these, these are budgets, we think they're accurate. Anything that, before we decided to move forward, we would put up competitive bids, this is hoping to give you enough information to make a decision or something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get it and see what we need to do.
Don't we think we've got a shade, I know you're shelling that on that auditorium over there. Let's see, next thing over here, we've got a few things we want to act in kind of celebration to tour around and let you talk about that a little bit.
Well, as Bob made me aware of, of course, we've already had congratulations here for our Teacher of the Year for the state of Tennessee, Miss Kathy Wyatt, third grade teacher at West. And she's about the end of her term and serving in that capacity. But Bob was given a copy of the UTM's Alumni Magazine periodical, and in that Kathy represents one of the class, she was class of 2010 and also 2013, so quickly back. It was a really nice write-up about her role in education. And again, I would say that we're very proud of the accomplishments, not only as a teacher, which she's exceptional, but also the fact that she serves on the Governor's Board, on Teacher Cap, which does give an opportunity for Chester County's advocacy to be stronger than before, with her having an opportunity to talk to the governor on occasion. And with his newest initiative of Ready to Read, Read to Be Ready, that really aligns closely with her passion and commitment to early childhood literacy. So I'm sure that her expertise and her interest will continue to be requested of through the state, the State Department and the Governor's Office. So we're very proud of her for those accomplishments. Not to say that she was, you know, we're already moving on to the next generation, but I will say, and I'll come back to the information from the scorebook, but I want to say that, you know, for the next calendar year, we already have recognition of Teachers of the Year, and those are included on your board pack. Chad Hannah for East Chester, Regina Carons for Jack's Creek, Mary Beth Miller for West Chester Elementary, Kristy McManus for fifth grade teacher at the middle school, Stephen Sales for the junior high, and then finally Rachel Harrison at high school. We're all recognized and have letters that I want you to sign with me before we leave tonight, congratulating them for that recognition. I will carry, you know, again, this is all grade level or school level representatives, and then we have grade band representatives. But I do want to talk one about, one in particular, Kristy McManus, which was not included on your board pack. It was actually realized after the board pack was done, is that Kristy McManus has been recognized as the Southwest Core Teacher of the Year. So she's representing all the districts in our southwest area. That's all the districts, I said it first, I thought it included Shelby County, but Shelby County is considered a district all by itself. So we partner with Shelby County in our Southwest Core, that was my confusion. But this is all, this represents all the counties in the Southwest Core region, which at least 20 districts total, including Shelby County, and I distinguish the two. But very, very much an accomplishment for her in this recognition. And in fact, we just had the time when our Marsha Blackburn, our representative for the US Congress was here, and made mention of that, and she is going to offer some proclamation for Kristy, upcoming's in her role. So that's, we're very proud of that accomplishment from Kristy, wonderful recognition. She's done a fantastic job at the fifth grade at middle school. And then if you look over at the, this was actually, these pages that fall after the, right at the back, Kathy, these are pages out of the scores. That's the Bill Frisk's Organization, that consortium that represents educational policy. They put out a yearly recognition of the state of education in Tennessee. And noticing on page 63 and 64, Chester County schools were recognized as one of 10 districts in two different locations, where only one of three that got noticed in two different listings. These are districts with, for one, with the largest TCAP grades, three through eight in math. We were number six in the state. Our growth was 26.9% in growth, which was again significant, top 10%, number six. And then also, we were recognized as the top five in the state, school districts for the largest growth in third through eighth reading and language arts. And in that case, our growth was 6.3%. So again, of these two, it's very significant recognition across the state. Again, it's always an encouraging thing when you're working hard every day, making sure that you're doing the best that you can to have evidence that your labor is not in vain, and that they are having success and recognized for that success in this publication from score. This is not where we can rest on our walls. We still aspire to be the best in the state, and we're getting a lot closer. So we're on the right trajectory.
All right, the next thing over here is going to be looking for the 2016 seventy school year, always making some recommendations, y'all seen those in the packet about raising some of the teacher salaries, starting salary, being more competitive in the surrounding counties. Sure, we want to, just put me on that, please.
I asked for to consider a plan that's included, it's called a SOAR compensation plan. It's just a draft, again, from, this is, we're in a third year of implementation of the TIF grant. And during the process, we're always looking at ways to improve the human capital side of our district. That means to make sure that we are ensuring that we are hiring and retaining the best teachers in the state. In an effort to continue to be competitive with districts that are in close proximity to us, the ones that we compete with for new hires in education. I'm proposing that we start the beginning teacher salary, we're talking about the step one of the 75 steps, which right now is at $32,747. What I propose that we do is start it at $34,500. Now, to support that number, I looked at two reports. One report, which was a year out, a year dated, was the TEA report, where they listed on their website, but it was, like I said, it was a year out. And at that time, the districts in comparison, and in your packet, the second, the page after shows which districts we compared to, there were 10 districts that some are contiguous, but others are like Tipton County, Gibson County, Fayette County are not adjacent to us, but those that we have had to compete with are new hires. When you take those districts in comparison, in 2014, 15, those 10 had an average starting salary of $34,300. But for the current year, which the State Department provided these numbers for us, the starting teacher salary for those 10 districts on the average was $35,064. So again, we, I am proposing that we raise that to $34,500, and that will put us in a better competitive amount compared to the other districts that, like I said, we compete with in the new hires. Any may have any questions?
I'd like to make a possible approval.
Start it.
We have a motion in second to approve the new rate for starting teachers. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Okay, the next thing over here is going to be approval for the master schedule, all which has some adjustments at the high school and junior high, those in the packet. Do you like to, give a reason behind that, please?
I can give some information, but both Dr. Catlet is here and Mr. Todd are here, they could address some questions more directly. But again, as, as we realized, the high school, again, we have an initiative at the state that is called Response to Intervention Square, Response to Intervention and Instruction. Because of that initiative, and it's been a process to where the lower grades, the K5s, were required to implement Response to Intervention year before last, or excuse me, last year. And then the middle school, junior high, had to implement it current year. What this refers to is those students who are identified cause of a universal screener, which is a test that is able to ascertain what level of foundational skills they have in math and reading. For those students that fall below the acceptable grade span of where they should be, then it provides them opportunity to get additional support in math, specifically foundational skills and reading foundational skills. It does take time away from the instructional time. And for students who are receiving special ed services, that has become now the replacement model to determine if students continue to remain eligible for special ed services, or even to be able to go into those services, they use the RTI model to make that determination. As we look at the high school schedule, to be able to do what has to happen where those students who qualify for both math and reading, RTI is what we call it, that Response to Intervention, there has to be, or recommended to be, 45 minutes to an hour worth of time on a daily basis for those subjects that they need that support in. The current structure of our alternating blue and white schedule was not going to afford those students to still have that same tier one or basic instruction that everybody has for those courses. And in addition, to be able to take the tiered courses to support their foundational skills. So that was the consideration around adjusting the master schedule. In this master schedule, it goes to a six-period day. And in the six-period day, as you noticed, notice on your high school master schedule, class periods will be approximately 57 to 59 minutes in length. They will because of the current capacity of our students, still having four lunch shifts during that fourth instructional block. And with that extra instructional time that's afforded during the fourth period, Dr. Cat and his staff are going to be utilizing that time specifically to build up the ACT preparation. So those teachers and students will be involved in a roughly 28, 29-minute period of direct instruction toward ACT content. The junior high is going to be on a seven-period day, which is class period last, and I don't believe I have a copy of their schedule in the package. But it's a seven-period day that's 50 minutes in length. They have a little bit shorter time in transition, instead of five like the high school, they're going to have four, like the, four minutes between classes. And again, the initiative that Mr. Todd was wanting to ensure is for one, his teachers who have common subject areas that they teach could have a common planning time together where they collaborate, build their lesson, their structure together, and have time afforded during the day where when they formally assess their students, to reflect on the results and be able to discuss collaboratively what the next steps would be to help intervene for those students. Also, at the junior high, currently with this year, is that the students who qualify for both reading and math- for both reading and math intervention are unable to do, if they qualify for both, they have to alternate back and forth from one day to the next. So, adjusting their schedule as it is will afford them the opportunity, for those students that need it, to be able to do both the same day. And still, and same thing for the high school, still afford them to take courses of interest, not just courses that they're required to take. And, again, for the high school, you have many more opportunities for coursework that includes, you know, CTE courses, the dual enrollment courses, the AP courses, all these other fine arts, other courses that are essential for the learning and makes school more fun to participate in. So, that's the content that I have. Ask the gentleman if he has any further questions.
Gentlemen, I'm sure y'all have talked to Troy about this, y'all think it's going to meet y'all's needs, the schedules they're setting up?
Yeah, we're hopeful of this.
You know, we have great teachers, so it doesn't matter what schedule, in the same way the junior high, they're going to do what is asked of them. I think what it does for us at the high school, like Coach mentioned, we're going to have our pin off of all our management, CPR, things that a student can get a sixty-day class in that we haven't been able to offer them. So, it's a big thing, and our teachers will be able to teach one subject that, you know, maybe they have some interest. We send a survey out and ask what they would like to teach, and we ask our students what they would like to have. So, it's going to be, still academics is the number one focus, but they'll have some extra time to pick up on some pretty neat classes.
If this is approved, when will they go in play, next two years?
It will respond to the RTI. They're going to be required for next year to start their RTI time.
I have a motion, second, approve the master schedule for next year for the junior high and high school. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. I think that is approved. All right, the next thing is approval of intervention elective focus to meet graduation requirements.
As we have learned, and, again, the meetings that Dr. Catlett, myself, and a few of his staff attended, as we are understanding better about what RTI means at the high school level and how that transitions, that the presenter at the time emphasized multiple times, again, reminder to the board that the, that every student has to have an elective focus for, that's a graduation requirement now. That elective focus can be CTE courses, which that's where predominantly students invest that time in, but it can be fine arts for students that meet those requirements that they have to do for graduation purposes. Anything in addition to that can serve as an elective focus. But with these students who, again, require that RTI time, maybe all four years of their high school career, that the state is now allowing it to be considered that an elective focus can be called an intervention focus, and that can include those students who are performing because of their screening or cause of these, I'm trying to think of the term, early warning system, where they are identified that they have to or need to participate in those RTI times, is that they can use those courses to serve for that elective focus. It can be just those intervention courses. But what I feel like, and what Dr. Catlett I would support feels like, that it would be more enjoyable, more personable for those kids to have an opportunity to be able to couple that with either an additional fine arts course, so, or a CTE course, or another course of more of an interest, rather than just saying the, your elective focus is only going to be just those courses of intervention. You can do it that way. But I propose that you, that you, as a board, recommend that our elective focus for intervention couple the intervention courses and a course that's either a CTE, fine arts, or another course that would fall into the general population students' choices for elective focus.
We have a motion, second, approve the intervention elective focus. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. I think that is approved. And the next thing on the agenda is the uniform grading policy.
Okay. This is, there's a heading of one that says Tennessee State Board of Education Uniform Grading Policy. And then there's another heading on the second page specifically that says honors course requirements. They should be probably back to back. And the uniform grading policy is multiple pages, but looking at the chart at the top of page one, I know this is something that years ago we considered, but the consideration here has the support of the state board, again, several years ago, because of, well, Tennessee is one of two states in the nation that has a grading policy included in state law. To be able to address some encouraging, or I would say incentivizing, those students to consider taking those more difficult, rigorous courses, the state board at that has recognized that honors courses and national industry certification courses, this would be like, in our case with the industry certification, this would be like the fourth course in the health science coursework, the nursing ed class, that has a CNA test. This would be like the fourth course in our automotive life repair or life maintenance, which is an ASC certification. Those are two in particular. Any honors courses that we teach would fall into that category. Those courses, that each grading period, you could add up to an addition of three points to that grade for that grading period. For state dual credit courses, statewide dual credit courses, and those would be the ones that we are in partnership with Jackson State, Free Harton University, those courses. For those, you can gain as much as four points. And then finally, the last classification would be those classes that we offer at Chester County High School for Advanced Placement, their AP courses. And for those courses, you could have as much, include up to five percentage points. Again, the interest in increasing those points for those more rigorous courses is to encourage more of the general population students to consider taking those courses. Again, research shows that if we want to improve our ACT scores at the high school level, they have correlated that to the number of AP courses that a student receives credit. Any course that we offer that has the opportunities to improve or increase the potential for them to have college credit earned before they leave high school, obviously demonstrates that they are more college prepared, more college ready than some student who just takes the general basic courses to graduate to meet their diploma requirements. We are trying to incite them to consider these harder courses, because right now, grading-wise, there is no difference. So, a student can literally have a very high GPA and take the basic courses and actually be, I don't, to better opportunities for scholarships and recognition than it is, I mean, than it would be if this was recommended. So, again, I go back on the basis that this was something that Darlene Goff brought to my attention last school year, that I didn't consider at the time to bring before the board, but I felt like with now us looking at an opportunity to offer more elective courses for our students to take, and the more opportunities for students to earn dual credit courses, that this will encourage them to take that choice, because they can do the work. It is more work, but the reward of it, well, they'll get a better grade. It will not change their four-point scale, which is calculated for the lottery. It says that very explicitly in the detail. So, this is not going to cause some students to be disadvantaged for lottery scholarships. This is just reflecting on that grading system when it goes back to what grading period they're using. So, for, say, if somebody's taking an AP course and they make a ninety legitimately with the grading, then the teacher would reflect that as a ninety-five.
We've talked about this about three, four years ago.
Now, if the, if you, as a board, support this, within the language of these five pages, I've restricted down the honor course requirement, that is the other page that's with this uniform. There's five bullet points. And, again, based on the language that's found in the state board of edge recommendations, that for a class to be considered honors, it's not just by who teaches and which students are in there. There are certain expectations of performances that those students have to do. The five that were picked here represent a strong emphasis on literacy, which is already a district initiative and goal set to improve literacy in our district schools. So, again, for a teacher or for a class to be identified as an honors course, and we often, I know Coach Catlett has, teachers asking, can we have an honors this or that? This gives definite steps that they would have to do, they'd have to comply with and agree to do, being monitored by the administration, to ensure that that course would meet the classification, as the state board says, for an honors course. The statewide dual credit, if we have a partnership with Jackson State, that satisfies. A partnership with Free Harton satisfies. An AP course, same thing. The status of the course dictates that it can be a part of this better grade. But for the honors courses, it has to meet these five criteria.
Today, we had eight students in our auto mechanics that took ASC certification, a hundred percent passed. So, that would mean those students, grade point average would be raised, be increased. And, you know, everybody wants to feel good about that. So, and our nurse and coach mentioned the CNA, we've had a hundred percent pass on the CNA test, nine years in a row, which means those students would get certification. Plus, we got a hundred percent job placement in CNA. So, it's incredible things going on with that dual enrollment college, our convention of students up there.
We have a motion, second, approve the uniform grading policy. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. I think that is approved. And then, we're going to look at the schedule for 2016, 2017.
It's almost like deja vu. Last year, we were shaking, bringing up a revision that was my fault. I would have to say, again, that this is another revision that I'm requesting that came out of my conversations with the faculty advisory committee, mostly the junior high and the high school, which is that in that second semester, and I've got it highlighted in bold print, that prior to the current school calendar for sixteen, seventeen, recommended that the second semester parent-teacher conference would be scheduled January the twelfth and the thirteenth.
That's awful.
Which was Thursday and Friday. Well, we were trying to piggyback that with the Markley King, it's in the holiday. But when I talked to, and I think specifically, some teachers at the high school who have new students every semester, one said, you know, I just see those kids for a few days. I really don't capture a lot of grades. So, really, that second semester parent-teacher conference was just reflecting what they did before Christmas. So, now, if you approve moving that second semester parent-teacher conference to the February second and third, that gives them twenty-three days. And in twenty-three days, that's where they have to do a progress report. So, they have some current data for, and I'm talking about student performance data for that conversation at that parent-teacher conference.
We have a motion, second, approve the revised schedule. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. I think that is approved. The next thing on the agenda, I think we have covered this the last few years. Current Ohio County tuition is five fifty per student year. For one student, an eight hundred, or two more students, and Troy's recommending that we keep that the same for the 2016, 2017. We have a motion, second, approve this. Ohio County tuition remaining the same. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. I think that is approved.
Didn't get a chance.
You want to speak up?
I'd rather they moved to Chester County, sold a house.
That's right. Not in Norman.
Go ahead, Norman, sell him on it.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda is, I think the board's required to approve athlete practice in the school day.
I thought we did that. It was not based on what I had on my notes, and I'm going back on what my record shows from last year's cycle. But I thought we'd already approved it.
Okay, we have a motion, second, we do approve that practice during the day. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. I think that is approved. Okay, the next thing on here is for the pay pound for online service for family regarding school meal fees. Troy, I'm going to let you...
Ms. Janice Plunk and Stephanie Lawler, who works in food services, had shared that they have had requests by parents, if there's a way they can go online and make those payments of their students' lunch or meals, say meals, to be able to check balances and to make those payments. So, this is in her, and I say her, Janice's and Stephanie's pursuit, this is a company who would be able to manage that service that they recommend. Now, again, as I learned, and I think I included in the language of your agenda, is that there is a fee with each transaction. So, if you approve, it will be food services' responsibility to ensure that the families are made aware that it is not financially advantageous to do it weekly, because it's about the cost of another meal. So, in five days of meals, you'd be paying for six if you did it weekly. Larger blocks of time, you're still one ninety-five. So, if you did it weekly or monthly or six months, you could, it's a dollar ninety-five service charge from the company. That's optional. It's not required. It's just, it's just a convenience for families who have requested, for some reason, to be able to check on it, because in the case of my three kids, I have to depend upon them telling me, what did you, how much do you have left? And I get a lot of, I don't know, because they don't.
All right, we have a motion, second, we approve the pay pound plan for online paying for lunches. Any other discussion?
Is there any other people besides this company that does this? I mean, my daughter does that, but I've never heard her say about paying a fee.
Oh, that's, Amy, it's like credit card fee.
I think what you're going to find, it's probably pay pound charge of the fee for using pay pound.
Yeah. It's like a credit card fee.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. I think that is approved. We have for the approval of some, to auction some buses and other summer food services. I think we've been using an app for the design of the name.
I included a letter in the package, gentlemen, from Patty Pickler. She came by to see Janice and Stephanie, and in that passing conversation, she had shared that they have some type of major financial contributor that's giving them the means of handling their own summer boot program. So, they no longer need to use the high school, and I think Westchester, which for those services. services. And they told me, or Patty told me at that time, that she would have no need for any of our buses. They're planning to get vans or some other transportation company today. Okay. So again, with that being said, you know, the reason why we have maintained these additional buses is just to support that summer food program. These are buses that no longer can be used in routes because of the years on the bus. So when I talked to Patty Pickler and asked him his recommendation, we have nine buses, his recommendation is to maintain one that's the, that has the, the most recent engine or the newest engine. But then the other eight could be auctioned off. And more than just anything, just getting them off the lot forces a little bit more parking on the bus shop side because they're parked behind the gym, the gym.
So we could use that one, say if a bus breaks down, we could.
No, you could, you still can use.
Use it for maintenance.
Use it for maintenance. It is a larger bus, but I mean, you can still haul things on a bus because you can't just call students.
Correct. We need to sell them to Missouri. They have no deadline. I mean, they can use them forever.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Now, these have had benches removed. I don't know. Oh, just, yeah, the benches have been removed so they, they, well, they just stock them full of those coolers, which is also something that is, when we talk about the other related material, and that is what Patty would like to purchase.
I think some people are always interested in the coolers too. But she did ask if we could do the auction as soon as possible because if they got the bid, they need to get them.
Well, at North Chester, I don't know how many classrooms. I was in there recently, just one, and it's from floor to ceiling. The whole room is cooled. So it's, it's my recommendation. Now, I'm sure that Ash Food Services would maintain a few for their own services of use, but it'd be my recommendation to include the majority of those, clean out that stock at North Chester. And again, the eight buses.
Do I have a motion to approve my Troy?
Second.
I have a motion to second approve the auction of buses and other food service items. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Updates here, the cameras are playing, they're already getting installed.
We have, the installation's complete. One at the high school, they think there's a camera that's failing. They've ordered another one, they're going to get in the bucket, go up, make sure that you're, now the engineer's going from school to school. I think he has all schools looking at it, and then he's going to come over to Troy and us' computer and finish the install where we can see it on the web system wide, even if you guys want to get the app and password, you could watch it on the phone or wherever. But it's, we're about to the end of it. Where did that end? I don't work one.
Why don't you go ahead and respond? Lights on the stadium.
Where we're at, we have already opened bids for the light packages. We have two companies, Quilite and Musco, that are very close. Billy Gordon has done the numbers on this number of fixtures. There's a lot of things that go into it. The thing that we are out for bid and will open next Friday, the electrical component, that's to hook them up and get the power to it. So we're waiting on those to come in. And I guess the thing that I want to address to you, the lights, we have to pick one within sixty days, April the fifth would be the sixty days. But what we're trying to do is get the electrical, put it together so you would know how much each was. Projections now look about two hundred and ten thousand dollars for both sets of all and everything installed. Is that something when we open the electrical and it looks to be that range, that we need to do a special call? Would y'all, would y'all like to see that before we make a decision?
When we get that, we'll.
Twenty-fifth, we'll, we'll know the electrical and then it would have to be a pretty quick turnaround because that, the light, they could technically withdraw the offer in sixty days.
Do it that next week. We'll be at, second, twenty-two.
He said twenty-three.
That's when they open the deal.
Just saying after the twenty-third.
Yes, we can do that, yeah. No, it's going to, it's waiting. We've already, we've already.
The poll and everything will be ready on the, on the fourth plate. All the, the plaque is, it came in, I think, southern picture, Red Melton with the city. Mayor has donated him to, he has the plaque now, he's making a plate, he's going to get it all power coded, he'll have everything ready, and then we'll set it. If you want to talk after, maybe if you have preferences where you want to see it. I have an idea where you want it.
Pictures.